Okay, we're. We're recording.
Just need to come in and record. I just accepted this stuff.
Then moved it.
It is six oh two. PM, I'm gonna call to order this regular meeting of the Dandle School Board Director. Um, my name is Ted Curry on the board chair. The board, the form of the board sits in the room. So we're gonna go ahead and introduce ourselves around the room, even though there's nobody on Zoom right now, that next to me.
Um, vice chair Dave Toll.
And also. Tim Sanborn is um otherwise occupied with a work-related thing and Eric Yu is out of town on something that was planned before he was elected. I have superintendent in the room.
Mark Tucker, superintendent.
Two building principals.
Sarah Welch Elementary Principal.
And our facilities director is kind of at the join us.
Brandon Lawrence.
Thank you, Brandon. And Randy Rasslin is at a softball game, as I mentioned. He's gonna get here soon as he can. He may not be blessed, so I'm not on the softball. Um, moving on. Uh, with addition to changes to the agenda, I have one thing I need to add, and it's gonna be largely procedural, and we can talk about it at length. During this, but under the board business of can recommendation, it should say discussion and possible action. So I'd like to add possible action to that.
Please.
Have motion to do so from Dave Toll. Second from Molly. Do you need discussion about that before we add it? All in favor of adding possible action for that piece of board business, please say aye.
Aye.
Although I, well, there was phone. And there's that. April second minutes were our um. Regular April board meeting minutes. We talked about some things. They're listed out here. Molly wrote the minutes. You send them to me. We review them before we move on. Molly, how you feel about those minutes? There you go. Good enough to make a motion? You look good enough to make a motion regarding them?
What did they do?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting for April second, two thousand twenty-four as written.
Motion in a second to approve the April second minutes. All in favor of the April second minutes, please say aye.
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 No, no, say in the minutes. Motion, Carrie. Okay, um, like to move on now to the superintendent report.
Yeah, I mean, I wrote about the yield bill, and I really don't have an update because it's like crashing around. It's in the Senate. Now, and they're trying to add some things back into it that the House had considered and taken out. So.
We just got an update from V S B A about forty-five minutes ago. This is roughly the same thing as what you're saying here.
Yeah.
But it's, it's up tomorrow. I hope they get it passed tomorrow.
Yeah.
But they, you know, they don't know.
But if the Senate adds something into it that the House didn't approve, it's gotta go back to the House. Fundamental uh differences of opinion between the House and the Senate that seem to be. Coming more and more common on, on pretty much every piece of legislation. I did finally um get an email back from uh Secretary Moore at A and R, and it. Kind of missed the whole point of what I was saying, or I don't think she's fully informed on what's been going on, and she just directed me to go back to the, the, the E C person. Trying to find some time to catch up with her.
Yeah, that was also in the V S B update, and they said again, they're just gonna, they're gonna pause it. They're gonna both pause it and then pause it, and I sent it to that.
Yeah, which doesn't do anything for us because they already tested us, and what I'm trying to get them to do is get rid of the problems that they've identified. Um, the, the biggest problem in this building still is somewhere in that electrical room. And it may involve, you know, like switches and breakers and stuff in there, which would mean. Overhauling that and, you know, getting rid of that panel and replacing it. I have no idea what we'd be involved in doing that, but we aren't even at the. Um, we, we aren't even at the point where we could like go out and get a bid on it. We don't have permission to do anything. But I'm gonna try to get D E C off the dime on this because Secretary Moore told me, oh, no, that stuff shouldn't be held up. You should be able to get your plan stuff. Which is not what her. Division people did. They just stopped work on it, so. Still battling a little bit, I guess, for lack of a better term. Trying to push some, push that through, get them to. At least at a point where they say, okay. For example, this is not, this is hypothetical. Danville, to solve your problem, you need to remove and replace that electrical. Okay, so then we go out and find out what that would cost, and we can anticipate that it would be lots of money, and then we would be asking. Uh, the state to pony up the money to pay for it from the remediation fund and starting to manage this. And getting, getting money out of that fund before somebody else used it all up. But. That's where we are.
But again, that's, that room, children, children don't go.
Children don't go in and rarely do adults go in. So that's why we've been okay. Um, you know, but that's probably the very, very, very low tech levels. Very boring P C Bs on the other side of the walls in there. But that's a space that adults go in and out of. It's a food storage, food container storage, but we were told for day one that it's not a problem. You know, a can, another can cans of SpaghettiOs or whatever. Just sucks, most spaghetti. You know, that's actually, that won't be contaminated, it's not a problem.
There's raisins in them.
Do you find more foot try, footprints on them or? So, if anybody has any of it. Um, I guess the only other thing, you know, this, this whole business with the non-confirmation of the Secretary of Education and. The governor's appointment to the interim position, it's just, it's a, it's a political mess. At this point, my guess would be if she is gonna be the Secretary of Education, because I don't think he's. I don't think he's gonna renominate her for approval by the Senate, and it's gonna leave her in there as an interim, as long as. He likes her and as long as he stays in office, so. Funny way to do it. But it's a, it's a way to do it. It's not necessarily popular way to do it, but it's, you know, it gets political. The big thing that, you know, I don't know, are getting, it's just, it's just political, and it's kind of sick. Lots of problems that don't get along.
So she is, she's the interim Secretary of Education now. You told me she set up on her day plan, so she's, she's already working.
We had a meeting yesterday afternoon, uh. V S A trustees and Jeff Francis and the incoming uh uh executive director of V S A. Jeff Francis is retiring. His longtime assistant was hired by the trustees to take that position. Anyway, it's just, you know, we'll see. Lots of other things going on in the world that have nothing to do with Danville, so.
As Dave points out, you sent us the email two days ago about uh some.
This, the after-school program? Oh, a grant, yeah, a grant. I mean, that's, thank you, that, because I did mention that for the record. So, we applied for a state after-school grant, and. They have two tiers, and the reason that Cabot qualified for the um, for the higher tier is because they have all the community stuff in place. That they put into place as part of the meaning of the schools grant that supported, and that was one of the criteria. So they're getting a big chunk of money. Uh, the other six schools are getting the share of sixty thousand dollars, so it's, you know, ten thousand dollars ain't nothing, but um. You know, there is a reason why Canada got a bigger dump, because they have more community services. In a very small town, they've built up community services to support their after-school programming. That's not a knock on us. They don't, you know, it's just hard to do it in here.
Yeah, no, we're very grateful for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good addition to what is.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll, we have, we'll have to spend that on the after-school program, and so that's ten thousand dollars. It's in the approved local budget that will not have to be spent on after-school.
Is that, is that the plan of it? Is to, is to not spend it? Is to just repurpose ten thousand of that?
Yeah, I did, well, I mean, we haven't had that conversation, but I, I, you know, um, I guess, you know, if there was, if we could justify it. Increasing the capacity of the program here. We would have an extra ten thousand dollars to do it, of keeping in mind that this is, as far as I know, this is a one-time grant. We'd be able to rely on it next year, so. You know, there's some yin and yang in there, but we have time. Still, it's, it's ten thousand dollars.
What was the uh, the part of money that they got for that community project? There was like a select number of schools that, for them to get all those pieces in place, they were part of.
It was a community schools grant that they uh had in place for two years now.
How did we get to that funding?
They applied for it.
Is that still available, or is that?
The program has not been, uh, it's not been renewed. There's, there was a bill in the legislature to, uh, to refund it, but I don't, I don't know if that's now.
Okay, that's another one we got today that is not coming in.
Yeah. Yeah, this is not the year for the legislature to approve spending. You know, it's, it's just, it's a, it's a tough financial year.
I didn't know if that came from like a federal source, that trickle through the state.
No, it was money that the legislature backed him. I think that, you know, back when everybody was flustered with COVID money. The, the let in, there was a lot of money coming in to the state, a lot of tax revenue coming in with the state. Um, during the pandemic, and the, the pandemic, as bad as it was from a public health perspective, was a financial boom to the state government. And so they directly set that off, they drafted money towards it. And hope to renew it. Um, and that doesn't look promising.
Right, anything else? Moving on next, the student service report. So Brittany's right at the top, a living, breathing, speech-language pathologist, human being. Is that right, Mark?
That is right.
That's been a big need for us.
We don't want, we have a full time one.
CCSU with another one.
Yeah, multiple. With, uh, cabinets surviving on, on remote.
Remote for a while, right?
Yeah, all year.
Big listeners.
Yep.
That's good. So special services is getting loaded up. Any questions about the special services report for the superintendent? Take back. Uh, should we email Ian Allen? You need to. If not, moving on. To the building principals.
Sure, important sweep today report. It's Teacher Appreciation Week, so we celebrate that with staff appreciation. P G, it's been awesome, helping out and supporting our parents coming together to show our staff. Appreciation for all that they do. Something that's been well received this week. We are done officially with state testing.
Any comment on that, the experience this year compared to last year?
I can't comment on last year, and then I know it was a disaster, but this year was relatively smooth.
Yeah, it was relatively smooth. One of the things we were talking about when we wrote this, um, because I always look back at the previous. Uh, months before, we finished testing on April nineteenth, the Friday before break. And we didn't, this year, and we didn't even start testing until April seventeenth last year. And so I think that's a huge, that's a huge piece. Um, the state, that's the state mandate um for the dates, and they moved it up. So it's a lot of instruction that is lost during that time, but as far as testing. For the most part, it went smooth. There were some glitches with like um, some of the accommodations for kids, but those are, we believe worked out.
But as compared to last year, last year reported to us that we were, our students logging in and getting into the test for other schools.
Other schools, I mean, our night traders, we, we picked big kids, but very specifically to start with the test, and they. Last year, some of them took, I mean, legitimately fifteen plus times to log in, log out, log in, log out, and. We saw that a couple times on that day two of a test, but not like maybe two or three times to log in, not fifteen plus, so that was, yeah.
And then uh, you sent me an email today, and you were talking about senior projects, someone.
Yeah.
It was a community night recently, and you said that there was some success showing the projects there, and then you wanted to talk to me and to us about bringing some projects in next June for some of the things to present. Does now be a good time for that?
Yeah, absolutely. So I'll let you recap. Um, so Community Night, we had our um incoming, our, our new, newly hired. Superintendent and system superintendent there to stop by and visit, which was great, just to see the kids and kind of get a sense for our, our senior class, but Rachel Keach, our. Flexible faculty coordinator asked me if there would be another opportunity for some of those really strong senior projects to be highlighted somehow, and so we're gonna do. An internal presentation for students, since they, most of them weren't able to come in the evening, um, and then we're hoping to have them come to present to you as well, so maybe three or five. Seniors coming to and show you their.
And do you want that to be during a meeting, or do you like that to be special, or would you like that during the meeting will be fine? So that would probably put that on to the June meeting, if that's okay with everybody. The first week of June, we'll have the kids come in.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be great. We need to start early, start early, maybe. See, I think, but I'm, I'm all for that. So I'll get interested in your projects.
Yeah, yeah. We highlight a few. Cooper Hawkins didn't offer someone, and then. Seminary, so.
That was, yeah.
Yeah, so there's some big ones.
Like, were they a newspaper out of?
Possibly.
And a courtesy bill. Maybe that, maybe that. All right. And then.
And uh, the tuition enrollment feedback, uh, were you happy about that?
I was. You know, I always want more feedback, but, you know, only so many people are ever gonna do it for you, so. I was thrilled to see the results, that a hundred percent of folks were saying, this is a good education, and some of the kids were already. So, we didn't get preschool kids or middle schoolers to agree on too much, so that made me really, really happy, so. If there's, there's a lot of good things happening in our, um, our high school, and I'm sure. To do a better job in coming months to next year and highlighting that and publicize.
Looks like that's your challenge.
Indeed.
We're trying out here.
Yeah.
We'll fly this week, putting sixth grade's gone, so.
We're gonna send them next week.
I know, I know. Well, then eighth grade is gone today, and they're gone tomorrow, and high school is gone there, like.
My school's on the monitor.
Oh, and more high schools.
National Art Honors.
Oh, see, that's right, and they are. Only better than last year.
I do.
I do.
That was two years ago.
Was it two years ago?
It was two years ago.
Oh, yeah, sure, right, yeah, but.
We haven't had much of a challenge from COVID this year. A little bit at the beginning.
Um, I think the CDC changed their rules so that staff and families don't have to be out for five days, which is nice. But we've still had staff specifically who've gotten really sick, until we just had a staff member who was out very sick all last week. Um, the entire group at school again, um, so.
There's some more illness things. My kids were the most sick this past year than they've been, or since they were born, in like one or another, now, you know. I don't know. But yeah, it was rough.
Well, we have norovirus and stomach flu and all kinds of stuff like that.
Last year, yeah.
This year, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, maybe not here. Had a big problem.
Yeah, and our only other plug would be J Cooloo is coming um for Arts Festival next week, and they're doing. Um, performance on Friday afternoon at one thirty, so. About three guys trying to announce this, or the updates.
Is that the week before? So is this your proposal for um Memorial Day or the week before?
The week before, the week before. It's not the Friday, but it's not Memorial Day Friday. That's, I think, twenty-fourth, because I think Memorial Day is earlier this week. Yeah, no, it's not.
Right, it's two Fridays before.
Yes.
We'll get details about prom, graduation, all that. Prom tickets on sale.
And we're currently sitting with, so you, you have some open positions, but we have um right now interim hiring authority going on, so if anything comes up.
I'm meeting with a, a P E. I recommend a P E hire tomorrow.
We'll be hoping, we'll be hopeful to find out.
Yeah, I'll let you, I'll let you know.
Well, and I think we should, I think you have a lot of applicants for this one.
Yeah. So a lot of folks who are graduated, graduating this month from college, um, have applied, so a lot of licensable people. Deep pool, solid candidates, so we're interested in honestly, possibly.
It's been a while since we've had a deep pool for any of our positions.
Correct.
Yeah, there are eighteen applications.
There's a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot, so.
Some of that, some of that is because of some hard work to make the, the starting salary for the first column, A one, for the teachers to be competitive in the region.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
That's, that's gonna challenge you. It's come up in some budget and stuff, but it's very important, if you're offering jobs, that your job is comparable to jobs that are in your life. Yeah. That's, that's a lot of means. I want a lot of those means, but it's Mark. Not pat myself on the back, I'm just saying. That's all. Okay.
Letter sheet reading from the drawer, talking about Tyler.
Oh, I mean, I didn't have anything specific for in the pros of it, um, I had to highlight it for the rest of the month. So we've met, our staff have met three times, twice as Dandle School, once last Friday with um, Des and Jen and um, that sort of gentlemanry. And the twelfth staff that are piloting too. So we are meeting as a staff two more times. So just talk about it, and what our present sounds, and figure out where we're headed.
Because your pile would be two different programs.
Yep, correct.
Then remind the board what the goal is, to pick one for next year?
Yep, the goal would be to pick one um. Between exhibitionary learning and appropriation, so they both support all the way through April, through eight. Um, art support all the way through to fourth grade, which is, um, just easier. So, but we're looking very specifically K eight.
To unify the curriculum.
Unify the curriculum, Common Language, Vertical Alignment.
But also with the, to unify the curriculum across several schools as well that are in our neighboring districts.
That is neighboring district, you, like, within our S U?
Yeah.
Um.
That's what we have. Neighborhood district.
That's true. I just am clarifying your language. Um, I, my impression is that the end goal is not to. Automatically have the same program in every single school, but in our.
We put two on the table.
But with.
Yes, two.
And we already know Cabot's using E L for this scenario, and they're not concerned to pick that. They're, they're gonna pick the one that makes the most. Sense for the student base and for the teacher base and.
Yeah, yeah. So they were vetted programs that were given. Going from there, so it's not like we're from a bunch and a half, so.
It's, I think they're one, I want to commend the principal for taking the time. This was not an easy conversation with some of the other schools, and they decided, well, let's down both, so, yeah, so that's good. I mean, you, you've done. You've done some good work for that, and then I think other schools are gonna benefit from that experience, even though that wasn't your assignment or not even the goal. You learned about two programs, and that's gonna be good.
Thank you, but I also wanna say, like, we didn't strong-arm our teachers into it, like, they were willing. They, they, you know, they all recognize there's gonna be a learning curve, but there's. By. Almost every teacher that we can teach in the program, it's piloting one, so it's, that's a really cool piece.
Any questions? Maybe you should, you should ask questions, but. Okay, so we'll move on from the principles before into our board business, and the first item in the board business is the can recommendation, which is the tax, tax appreciation notice.
Intercipation.
Tax anticipation notice, and we had action. And uh, we talked about this before. It wasn't on, it wasn't on the thing. This is a procedural action by us, but the actual act of borrowing the money has been approved by the voters already. This is just, but the auditor's access to make sure, make, make the smoke at some point. So we're gonna review some of these. I'll turn, turn both of them off.
So just um, maybe for um. For now, we've got it, because you weren't here only in this last year, so you understand what a tan, what the purpose of the tan is?
Is that to just lay out for everyone what, what the spending would be?
No, no, it's a tax anticipation note. So what it'd be, so on July first, you basically grow, and you have to have money. Yeah, because you spent the F Y twenty-four money. Tax collection, the tax revenue doesn't come from the town until early fall, so.
October.
October, okay.
Oh, yeah.
So what a tan does is it, it, it's a, it's a loan that we take out, the finance takes it out, and we have to band it. And it's sort of, you have some cash in the bank, pays bills and glass hearts until the tax. So the way that Mike has done it, and he does a really good job with handling this, is he borrows the money. There's a whole formula, you know, for cash flow analysis. I don't understand it, and I don't need to, none of us do. Okay, and he says, I need this much cash to get us through until taxes. So we get a chunk of money, he puts it in an investment account. So part of the negotiation uh with the banks is you have to, not only loan us money, but you have to give us an investment account. That we can use to put that money into until we need to spend it, and to put our tax receipts in when it comes in. And we make money off the investment account, and he manages the cash in such a way that he only draws enough money out at the time to spend it, moves it into a general account to pay bills. And by being really careful with how he uses your cap. He actually makes money. Over and above will be at to pay an interest on the, on the tan bill. So um, they used to be a slight lost leader in the past years, and Mike knows how to manage cash, so everybody makes money on this. Um, what I put up on the screen here, I'm not sharing, sharing the screen, it's just, it's just us chickens, but um, what he did is he went out to the banks and he, he, we've. We've been working with the Somerset Savings Bank for a while. They have all of our checking accounts, so all of our money flows through them. Um, and they bid on this, uh, but we also went to Union Bank and Community National Savings Bank. And you got proposals, and so there's always some, a little bit of variance, like one of them might come in with slightly higher. Or lower interest rate on the note, and, but then they might come in with a slightly higher or lower interest rate on the investment account. But one of the things that was different this year that the Somerset did was that they actually offered. Us uh, an investment account. CCSU doesn't raise money, but we hold on to money. And they offered an investment account for the block of money that CCSU, cash that CCSU has, pay its bills. And because of that, um, the, the one on the left, he did the comparisons between the Somerset and the Union Bank, and then the Somerset and Community National Savings Bank. The net, the net of this is that the, the total, the best deal is still from the Somerset Savings Bank. Uh, in terms of a combination of loan rates and the investment account, and, and the thing that really carried over the line is the. The ability for CCSU as a financial entity to make some money on its cash that it holds in its account, so. The recommendation for finances is that we continue, or we take on another can, and this is a recommendation across the F D, if we, if we can't do. Three different notes or whatever, is to stay with the Somerset Savings Bank. Um, and to accept their offer on, because he's got bids on each of the, the five districts and the M T U office. Uh, and to accept, and to accept the Somerset Savings as the provider of the can for uh F Y twenty-five. There's another slight factor in there that's, it, it's, it's not a deal breaker, but. We have all of our accounts with the Somerset, and if we go to another bank, they want all the money to go, so we gotta close accounts, we gotta track, and all that stuff. It's work. It's not a backbreaker, but it's still, it's an annoyance. At a time of the year when you should really be starting to focus on closing out the books or F Y reports. Uh, the recommendation that I'm making to the board on behalf of finances, if you approve. Um, the use of, the issuance of the tax note from the Somerset Savings Bank, and I don't have the dollar.
We need it.
So, let me see if it's.
Last year, I have in the minutes.
Do we have a dollar now?
What, what were you asking about for the savings or the?
No, we actually have to say how much of a can, with the auditor calls.
For the motion?
They have to approve, yeah.
It's so because we. It's on the warning.
We wrote, the auditor stated that all boards should formally approach cans. You know, maybe about, um. Nothing else is in there.
I thought, I thought we had a conversation about needing that specific amount. But it was. But it was.
Oh, we do, we have, yeah.
Like you can do it without it, but it wasn't.
Yeah, the total amount you're saying that we're bar, that we're, yeah, this one does say last year was one point six, does that sound right? Maybe that was what we have in here. Yeah, the money that we need to borrow, which was one point six and some change for this year, what we have in here. From last year.
You sent me the analysis, let me just double check and make sure you bury.
And we do have it in a motion too, we did say in the amount of one point six.
Okay, I just, can we come back to it, and I just texted him for the amount, it's somewhere, it's on here, so.
But this is interesting, the, the profit was definitely like a thirty five thousand, but we're not talking like three thousand. Yeah, that's what, maybe that's what he said last year. Yeah, it goes into the unrestricted fund, unless we have to go somewhere else.
All right, uh, let me, let me get them and I'll.
So in the short term, we're gonna. Alright, so we're gonna move on and I'll move back, since we have a number, but no. The next thing on our agenda here is, is just NASDAQ. We've got another report from NASDAQ with similar enrollment projections, which is. You know, they're roughly similar, and one of the things that we talked about, um. And with Mark, was seeing what else they could do, and it really didn't make sense to try to get them to, to do anything further. We, we couldn't give them access to our, all of our, all of our data and everything, so this is the stuff that I'm getting from them as far as I know. So, do you wanna go back, let's, let's, I'm gonna table NASDAQ now. It's, let's be good, so let's, forget I paid. I untable it, I'm gonna untable the tabling of the table, I'm gonna go back, I have. Now I have a recommendation from the superintendent regarding.
So according to cash flow certificate, you need to approve a can in the amount of two million. One hundred and twenty eight thousand, two hundred and fifty four dollars.
With the Somerset thing.
With the some, the Somerset thing, so.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the tax. Anticipation note of two million, one hundred and twenty eight thousand, two hundred and fifty four with the Somerset Bank. For the Dambel School District for F Y twenty five.
As recommended by the superintendent.
As recommended by the superintendent.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, and a second motion by a second by model. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of approving that, two, one, two, eight, two, five, four, please say. Alright, alright, sorry about that. Good enough, we're gonna NASDAQ, um, like I say, NASDAQ, enrollment projections. I don't know where we're gonna go with this, just NASDAQ, they, well, I think that some of what we anticipated was that they would give us, that we were hoping they'd give us.
I think the good thing that we have this, if there is ever any money with a state. For, for building work, and it's gonna be, sounds like it's gonna be required that they're gonna want enrollment data, so I think the fact that we're hooked in with us yearly will be. A helpful thing, um, and to the community too, to say we can give them information about.
The only thing that's, that's problematic, so what Eric was asked, but we can't really do. Well, we, we can't get, we can't get projections for. We can't get projections for in, for numbers of incoming tuition students, because that's. They're coming from choice districts, there's not a way to project that, the only thing, you know, we could pay NASDAQ to give us some, you know, some enrollment data, maybe from. Other towns that typically send kids here, but it's still not gonna, I don't think you can rely on.
Or seeing the trend might be interesting, like what was it like five or ten years ago, that might be something, whether, whether we rely on that or not, but this.
But I think even some of this trend data isn't accurate, like looking at. These pages are numbers. Um, so then page three. Like the pre-K enrollment data that they're looking at, I'm assuming they're assuming that we have preschool, we don't. Right now, so they're splitting that and saying that that cohort.
Only two at some point.
Well, like, no, so like the twenty five, twenty six cohort. Shows twenty four preschoolers, but eleven kindergarten, but there. That's, um. That's still.
But they, so the assumption that NASDAQ is making is that half those kids.
Right, so that's.
No, all of them, right?
Right now it is, and I can't project any much further out than that, I wouldn't wanna guess me beyond that.
That'll be a factor.
Right, yeah, so that's just something to consider, uh, with looking at the unknown number versus our current.
If they were on the same trajectory of, we are gonna serve three and four year olds, that's our goal, and this would be a relevant. Document for our building.
Right, but then that number would be higher. Right, so like for next year, so the twenty four, twenty five preschool numbers, it should be about twenty four. But those are all four year olds, so that twenty, it should be like, or maybe twenty two of them are four year olds, um, following through. But if we added in three year olds, it would be more like thirty six kids. So then if that's a trend that they're trying to take down, their baseline number is wrong. Is the only thing to say, like, if that's, is it more like a thirty six cohort of three, four year olds and not a twenty four?
And we're not gonna know at all, because we don't think in the three year olds. We're turning it in the way of the door, so, but why, why isn't it twenty four of each age, is that because we fill up our. Pre-K classrooms with fours.
I don't have any.
Fourths from, but some are from other towns.
Not right now, we don't take, we have, these are only, we've got a little.
Taking Dambel students, and we have twenty four four year olds, so in theory, if that trend is level. Then we should, we would be seeing twenty four three year olds.
Potentially, yeah. Our, our preschool projection numbers are speculative based on like birth announcements. Cassie and I have done pretty deep into get that, so. So that would be the only thing to think of, like, the future projection, I mean, it's a guess anyways, but I'm not sure that baseline is. An accurate guess.
And what numbers did we give them, we gave them. But meaning what year did we give, we gave them.
The end of this was current enrollment.
Right.
Oh, okay, right.
But I don't.
Now, we did this last year though, right?
Did we tell them it's only, it's only four year olds, that might make their projection shift for that very specific cohort graph.
I don't know why, I think.
But this is, I think we have to be tailoring making these reports until we have the, we only taken.
Yeah.
We only taken four year olds.
Well, that's something that we're gonna do the next time we submit. Cause all I do is put numbers into a spreadsheet.
They seem pretty good about adapting.
Within, uh, within the constraints of the contract we have, we have a lot of. And I think they're responsible. Um, I mean, I'll be honest, it's sad in my inbox for.
Wonder, I'm trying to think of before you leave, Mark, just so it's not, they have the information they need about this preschool situation. Should we send that, clarify that with them first?
Yeah, I probably should.
Okay, just for our next round, they'll do this in the fall again.
Yeah, I think it's useful, because when, when you see the downtrending, that, that may not be the case, then it's not really helpful.
Right, we can't, right.
Right, cause we don't have cohort grade levels that are. Just eleven and twelve, not right, I mean, I, right, don't have a crystal ball, but that's.
Yeah. Is there a reason they don't go back earlier than twenty eighteen?
Well, it's five years.
I think it starts to get not as valid when you go, keep going back, back too far, I think they found, they just in terms of. Yeah, yeah.
But that's, it's a statistics reason.
I think so, I remember, I can't remember, but. And I think they did say, they say it somewhere, I think that as you go out farther, you know.
When you start moving standard deviations out from, from the minimum, and then you.
Five years should, like, knowing that COVID. Like, like two years before, two years after COVID.
When I was talking with that, NASDAQ, they said, you know, this has been really hard to do because of the pandemic. And everybody's numbers are skewed.
So they, if you look at the reliability of enrollment projections, I think they talk about it in there. Yeah, I'll be on. Yeah, there is something, there's like some disclaimer in there about, as you, you know.
This is probably worth it if it's, but to the extent that it's buying, um. credibility with the community.
Just the collating of data in the, in the report is useful, and I think it's not that expensive. And especially if we're still shining with Punchfield in the coming years, if they're still doing it.
Well, I think, I think that's why it's especially important to fix the preschool, cause that makes it look like our enrollment is gonna shrink.
Right, I think that's an important piece. Yeah, and stating if we're including tuition and residence together, stating that that's the case, that the tuition students are included in this. The second grade, third grade doesn't have thirty two on its own, okay?
I gave them separately in a separate table in December. Counts of students that were, uh, tuitioned in by grade, so they had that ba- that baseline data.
I know seventh grade looks right, Amelia's grade definitely didn't have thirty two prior to this year. I don't think, she was a smaller grade than Ethan, but I know Ethan was big with thirty two.
Right, no, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Don't do it, you're gonna complain later, somebody said your kid's name's in a meeting.
I know children in that grade. I guess what maybe, they get one, is the end, the total enrollment number I thought was too low.
Well, like, right now we have thirty one.
So the, the data that I sent, I mean, keep in mind, it's a snapshot of time, you're all going to pull our current enrollment data. You gotta have kids move in and move out, it's gonna not match up exactly.
Right, well, but it's, so on page three, that projected percentage change, which definitely, that wasn't with preschool. Or maybe it is right. That would be about right with, without preschool then.
So the, I think it might, you know, somewhat limited experience with them, I think we, we get them on the phone and we explain this. Think, and they're gonna say, oh, then we need to do acts, we need to do acts.
Right, and I think, yeah, I think it's probably in their algorithm, basically, that's. I think the assumption would be that preschools, open, in public schools, to three, four year olds, which is.
Yeah, spring update, seventh grade having thirty.
Yeah, no, I think you're right, I think I, I didn't realize it was just data.
So we do think that is tuition included, and that's good to know, yeah. Alright.
So you're all feeling good about this, what you're getting out of this? Good enough to move ahead, the renewal will come up in the fall.
I think that, you know, in December or January, that we.
Well, it may be earlier, because we signed on late.
Oh, right, yeah.
Maybe earlier, maybe more towards the beginning.
Like you said, they signed us up for the next year, or games last year, whatever it is.
Well, that's, that's, that's the other question, and we'll talk.
And then the special end report, so.
Alright, um. So next, we have a facilities update.
Uh, yeah, so just, uh, a couple of things I had was Sarah had talked to me about replacing the carpet. On the other side, like when you come in the main entrance and go to the left of the main office. I got a quote from Punch Report to do that job, um, I know that company really well, they're really reputable, they do good work. They're the ones that did like all the tiles in the entranceway. See what you guys thought about doing that, and that summer work, obviously.
Yeah, yeah.
Was that the only bid?
That's all I got, just to get an idea, um, I can absolutely get more. Thirty seven hundred, thirty seven ninety two.
It was a very reasonable bid to wait in that.
Way below our, our bid, our lucky bid threshold. Um, I mean, I think, you know.
I know I can bid it out too, but like, I personally know the company, so I.
There was thirty seven thousand, which would be close to the, then I would say get more.
This, this is a project that we've wanted done for a while, aesthetically, it's one of those aesthetic pieces. That, that carpet is a weird ugly green color, it's like it to match the rest of the new brown color. It doesn't. Weird browns are weird green, but it's, um. Pretty fretless, it needs to be replaced for sure. Some of those aesthetic pieces that are a little bigger for a long time.
They would also be, uh, replaced with like two by two tiles, they call them, they're carpet tiles. So if like one got ruined or some stupid, like who knows what happened, you can just peel one piece up and put a new piece back in, obviously. Fifteen years, put a new one in, it might not look the same when it's brand new, but just anything in the near future.
But you're not looking at replacing the whole run.
The whole, right, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, you could, it might look a little off, but you could get it looking better, yeah.
Is there anything under there that might come out with? The building project that we're doing at some point down the road, like would we be, say, next year we start. Talking about or getting our building project going, like piping and that kind of stuff.
I believe it's just concrete water.
Okay, so we wouldn't be tearing any of that up anyway.
I don't, no, I wouldn't.
Okay, that's, that would probably stay.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, I mean, Hall is probably gonna say, be a bit, has been ended up with a lot of construction work, then. Looking to replace it some tiles, but it probably would be. The whole run and theoretically there, if we're doing any construction, they're creating walkways for themselves that aren't damaging the infrastructure.
Yeah, so that's the first one, and then.
I, I can probably talk better about these next two.
I have a question about a security upgrades, are we gonna discuss, uh, security upgrades to the point that we would need to be in an executive session?
No, I don't.
We need to, um, approve this first.
Do you want them all up together?
I really drew them separately.
Oh, I didn't, I was just gonna say how many, how many things we were gonna be looking at this. But I'm, this one, this one makes perfect sense, do you need a motion to approve this, because it's coming out of unrestricted?
That would be the only one.
Do you have, is everybody okay with this one? It makes sense, the boards, the assembled board? And the thirty seven hundred, yes.
It'll be this summer when it gets done?
Yeah, yeah.
Any little things we can do, yeah, on the way.
Or up to four thousand.
Yeah, you might want to put a little buffering, Casey. A motion to approve the. The estimate of not more than, um. Not more than four thousand dollars for carpet and hallway replacement. Going up the ramp. From the unrestricted funds.
A motion on the table.
A second.
Second, the motion to replace the carpet hallway. On the ramp side, all of it.
I can get some.
Like, I don't know, one of those security affairs, but it's cameras and you know, you can. Like, I don't know, one of those security upgrades, but it's cameras and you know, you can talk about it without saying specific.
Just wanna make sure. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we were talking about something that we didn't need to talk about.
People know we have. Which one we're upgrading and why. Well, we don't wanna talk about why, but.
So, so that's, so we're gonna move down to building parking lot maintenance and security upgrades. That we're gonna move down to that piece of business. And I'm gonna turn it over to Sarah, so she's the one to talk to.
I don't know, I, is there, I don't know if there's any other facilities people that ran amongst.
He's lost as far as funding and stuff, I don't think so. Yeah, I just, I got done working, went home and I filled the whole framework for the new sign. So that's ready to go. The tracker's down, it's down here, getting worked on, so when that comes back, I'll get that all worked out. Then they wanna put in.
And you know that's on somebody's private property.
That man doesn't live at that house.
But we should let her know we're doing that.
It was really heavy to get out of my garage.
On both sides and under the. Who wants the property that signs? We should just make sure that, you know, rather than sending, bringing a tractor down there and digging up this long, we should let her know we're sending a tractor.
Yeah, well, there won't be any dating with a tractor, just basically.
Make sure that we continue to have a.
Do you wanna contact him yourself or are you gonna contact? I'll send him, I'll send you.
If you wanna, as long as I know what it is, I can.
Plan some stuff around it. You got this all worked out.
Hundred percent.
Good, 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 good. Nobody should take a picture of it and send.
Yeah, no, I said, but I said that month, month ago too, like some little, like those little box, whatever things that don't require a lot of.
Um, so there was that, and then um the front entrance will be getting painted sooner than later, hopefully like the the white. I've been trying to get them the last two weeks, but weather's not cooperating. So that's on schedule and.
Did we figure out the fencing out here, who does that?
Uh, no.
But that's state.
For painting, you, no, I think we decided that was us.
It is us, okay.
Yeah, I was gonna ask the guy when he comes and paints that and just see like what he thought. To date that too, but I figured for now that the.
Wouldn't say it's made out of material.
The, at least the. The white part of it, yeah. Yeah, I've never actually looked at this yet.
In between the. I always thought that was metal, but the way it appears.
This chip, I go like, I just noticed a month ago that it is chipping, that's why. And the trash is gone, thank you.
At least most of it.
And the, part of the trick is, and thank you for in advance for, just don't let piles.
Yeah, there's dirt piles up there, but that's.
Dirt piles are different than trash pile.
I was kind of assumptions of price of that.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't have been that kind of a problem because we have trash collection all the time, we could have taken that, moved it to the time in this issue, there's a question of action versus inaction.
Should get down under woods?
I haven't gotten over there, none of the metal stuff.
I think some of that's been.
There's the town, and they told you about the town of Rives, there's a scrap metal bin.
Yeah, the wood that's over in the, in the woods over here is not, it's gonna be a dumpster, but that always make us money, so, or should. I'll call bulldogs or all metals, tell them to drop off the metal dumpster. Yeah, I don't know about the tanks, but. I'm not taking.
Alright, thank you for the facilities update. And now, move down, Sarah.
Let Brendan go or?
Paving, and I can talk about the other two.
I'd kinda like to hear about this.
Um, okay, so. There's two different pieces with first choice. The, I'm gonna go out of order with how they are leaving boarders for today. The second line was the camera replacement, and we've upgraded our cameras with some different security upgrades, we've upgraded to digital cameras. Um, which is fantastic, it allows uh much better visibility in and in and outside of the building. Um, this one that's on here is one of the last. Exterior ones that we would like to replace. Um, we did a big chunk of, um. We did some camera changes last year after we had those break-ins on campus. Um, and this, I don't, alright, this camera got messed or something. So that's, that's where this piece is. When Natalie and I. Looked at this, um. It's a lot, but part of, part of it is um first choice charges a travel fee. Um, and so doing the potential of then doing two projects together would theoretically save a little bit of money. Um, with that travel cost, and maybe even some of that stuff, um. So that first one's the camera, the second one is. Um, when we did this big upgrade with our cameras, and then when we added that that. Double security entrance in the front lobby, we are operating all of our cameras in the doors, door camera system. On a single server. Which, um. Keeps freezing, so if it works, it's fine, it's. It's not ideal, um.
Yeah, operates with.
Yes, and so it's not as reliable as we would hope it would be, um, security wise, it was not as reliable as we would like to be. So the box, you split it and put the doors on one server and. And we have another one to keep them up because they. Is that ten grand. That's.
Well, they wanted to be done once.
Yes, right, um, it only has to be done once, it gives. There's spaces in there already, if we wanted to add cameras and rewire it with new cameras. There was wiring done, so that if we wanted to add the others, um, because they're not all digital, so so that wire is done. Some of that, these, but as we all know, everything just goes up. So it's definitely a much higher cost. I mean, when we made that change several years ago.
So when you say you can't monitor, you mean if we, if this is, you can't monitor.
Correct, very regularly, you know, like the big moms are in the office, the.
That exists so that you can monitor.
Door, you're like, oh, our door fell, it's ringing again, and the image shows you, nobody there.
Right, so we're losing the live monitoring, it's still recording.
Yeah, so if you go to it hours later, you know.
Okay.
And it, it's what was problematic in September. Becomes much a, much bigger frequency issue right now.
Oh, it's the statute that we, was it this year or last year?
It was in, in the course of last year, they made this law that we're getting in front of. And it became the law in July.
Feeling, and not being able to. Monitor live.
I mean, we have visual access, it's.
Yeah, you can see.
And it's not, I mean, it's not a daily thing. By any stretch of the means, but that's more than I would like to be. So, um, but it was also a much bigger piece.
For sure.
How many cameras do you have on the screen at one? The screen is like this, right?
Yeah, Kathy can put up, Kathy can put up as many as she wants. Um, we choose to leave a. Those high traffic.
Okay, and you add more cameras to windows. Right, that's a possible, we have four monitors like this in the event security office. During the, during peak times, we might have uh these three here and then some smaller ones. So, um, if you're going from a one monitor to a two monitor uh system. That's pretty good.
It's not giving this another monitor. What it's doing is it's splitting the server so that the cameras are operated on one system. And the doors are operating on a second system, which according to first choice. Is why things are freezing, it's all trying to operate under.
Why don't you get two monitors? I think the monitors aren't.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that, it would be an easy thing to add, but it's. We don't.
Because we have too many cameras up on all this other stuff, everything lags behind and you're. It won't, it won't even uh record correctly, so.
Yeah, the visual display should be able to work.
Because if you added a new moni- uh, a second monitor. For this right here. I'd be happy with it.
That's, yeah, I mean, we can, I, we'd have to look at space and stuff like that, that's an easy smart TV is what most of our stuff is, so that's. An easy thing you could figure out. Yeah, I don't know if there's space in there either.
Yeah, I don't know if interactive. It sounds like there's too many cameras on this one server for what the storage is. Which is like with any, your computer, whatever, when your storage is, you know.
That is what they're.
And we have to legally.
Yeah, you know, and I would like to be able to see certain places in the building.
That server quote, didn't it say too, like you could have X amount more cameras?
So, can we have total, total now, you know, they can't be. They say you could have sixty, the proposed server, okay, so it can cover sixty cameras, the, this, this new server. So we're not close to sixty, so we have.
Yeah, so this says what it would give us, um. Right here, so we have, we currently have ten terabytes of storage and in the gray, like below that, it would give us a twenty four terabyte server, right?
So. And then again, back to the facility changes or renovations, I assume it could all just be rewired and if we do any.
Yeah, so when we, when you remember when we were talking to Cam, he climbed up. All of, like, that's part of the key that he's talking about, it's all just laying. Um, in here, and so, yes, it's very usable. Similar to what he said, you can't necessarily rule that wire.
But it's not on tracks.
Well, right, and so with the renovation, I think that would be part of that conversation, how do we put that wiring in more significant position? Not that it's causing a problem, but it's not gonna last, like, we can't.
One of the proposals was to do shiny ceilings too. So at that point, hopefully we can adapt the wiring.
So the wiring might have to be replaced, but the wiring shouldn't cost.
Right. We should be able to salvage and imagine making salvage. Alright.
This is eleven thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars for the two minutes, for the two separate, um, estimates.
For the server and the camera, yeah.
So this might be an area where you wanna do a little vague in terms of what's. Not specified for.
That would say security upgrades.
Security upgrades is just, you know, as proposed. I'm not sure they are.
Yeah, I'm not, because, in our other conversations, I'm like the big level conversations, I think.
And I think we can still say that it was a security upgrade, and um, one one three one five.
I make the motion that we approve. Eleven thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars. For security upgrades as recommended by the.
Alright, I have motion on the table. I have second. For further discussion? Are you not all in favor of the approval of the one one three one five detail? Okay, uh.
What is our total unrestricted firm at this point? Are we at the two hundred?
We were at two forty seven and this is shrinking, and so it's. So, when the books even out, we'll see what we get. Okay, um. We're not gonna talk about the paving project, are we talking about the paving project next? At twenty thousand dollars?
That was just an option, but. So I just had that guy come out, give me a quote to fix the pat, the spot by the drain, that's really bad. And then the patch that I had to temporarily fix would pull back. I just figured while he was here, just to give me a rough idea of what it would cost to pave, like, where that parking lot. Pavement ends to go square across towards the dugouts, just because I see like this cleanup from the winter months with all the plowed up dirt. It was just an idea to uh see what it would cost to fix that up, make it look nice and then not have that problem after each winter. Um, I would like to at least be able to move forward with the patch work. I didn't know if, when he was here, if it's like, oh, he's already here, it's gonna be only this much more to do that compared to. But the patches, but it was a pretty big difference in pricing, so.
And so the pa- the patch is done.
Well, that's, that's. This is like a legitimate, they'll cut out, but like a square concrete or a paving and then put in a real paved.
And fix around the drainage.
Where's the drain?
Yeah, it's right at the curve.
So the the twenty two fifty would fix those two spots.
I'm sorry, this, uh, the twenty thousand is down at the town fields?
No, 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 the park, the main, the main parking lot.
So just past, just past where the pavement is, where all the bumpies go, and then they shove the snow up toward. The ball field, and they just eat the yard, eat the yard, eat the yard, all went along. Until so soon as, then the yard falls out and then you just have people, it's a thing in the building, you're doing maintenance, doing the spring clean up.
So it was just an idea, when the guy was out here, I figured I might as well get a quote to just see.
Wow, it wouldn't be twenty thousand dollars.
And I also, I worry that, that if Trex Collins has some sort of idea about. Re-rooting or, I just worry that we would invest that and that could be a possible change with the building project, maybe not, but. Like that corner is just tough in general, like maybe we bump it out, maybe we.
Yeah, it was just an idea, because I don't know what paving costs, and when he was out here, I'm like, well, maybe this will cost five thousand or it'll be ten thousand to do it all. Yeah, it was just an idea, because I don't know what paving costs, and when he was out here, I'm like, well, maybe this will cost five thousand or it'll be ten thousand to do it all when it's, when it's here. Yeah, it wasn't, that wasn't. Yeah, but I, I asked.
No, I, I would rather. Yeah, it'd be nice to know.
Because you know this is the low. He's paid the whole thing, and I think it's good to. With the seniors. Yeah, talk about that.
Good work out, everybody. Have their feet. Um, driveway's paved this time. When we can piggyback on. And all the extra things, the town is gonna do something.
Yeah.
We gotta piggyback on that.
Yeah. Yeah, but they're right, you're both fine too.
We're not gonna do the. The big. For now, but you wanna.
But I would like to.
Get a good.
But it doesn't make any sense to keep having to fix it for.
Yeah, I mean, it costs, it was like two hundred bucks it cost me just to fill out one file. I had a little bit of extra paint left over, but.
Right.
And it's, it's gonna get ripped out.
It's been patched several times.
Yeah. And I can't put cold patch in where the drainage, because that's like kind of. It'll just go everywhere, it wouldn't stay. Yeah, so.
How do you guys feel about this twenty-two fifty to uh, six oh two pothole permanent, that's two thousand. Twenty-two fifty.
Yeah, two thousand.
I don't know where the just.
No, you didn't, but just say it in standard.
No, I just said I'm right, my brain didn't hear.
Twenty thousand.
Oh, so can this be done?
Uh, I would assume fairly soon, I'll reach, as soon as I. Know that we can do it, I can reach out to him and find out. I would imagine it'll take just a day too, so.
Right, the problem is we can't close that.
Right.
Where it is, so.
That's the worst possible.
Yeah.
Will the cold passage you put in hold up until school's out?
Yeah, probably.
I think we gotta ride that thing into the summer if we can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I can put in a couple bags here and there. Me too, just to keep it in this spot.
Yeah.
This is green on paving for two thousand hundred and fifty dollars.
Are they the guys out of Eastbury?
It will, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't get my driveway, they do good work.
I see them everywhere.
But they're not cheating, but they do good work.
I see them everywhere.
Yeah. There aren't too many people around that and it's, and you can't get anybody to come and do that.
Right.
Took me forever to find somebody to come and carry me.
Right, especially for such a small.
It was expensive, but they did a great job, so.
This doesn't seem expensive, but it's a problem that everybody.
Right, yeah, yeah.
It's pretty.
Everybody.
Yeah.
Staff over the town.
Yeah.
Everybody that you see, everywhere you see.
I think it was a question to people.
And there's some of those little seven pieces that don't have a big price tag.
I will move. You want a motion or I will move to prove uh, expenditure. Um. Should I do the exact amount or should we do?
Two twenty-five hundred?
Twenty-five, no more than twenty-five hundred dollars to green mountain paving. Um, to fix the pothole in the parking lot from the unrestricted funds. I'll work that better.
For a patch, ten by twenty patch.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that was just as well.
Okay.
I had to clarify, like, is that?
No more than twenty-five hundred, will that be good?
I would imagine, because I clarified.
Recommended by. The facilities director. Yes, the. I had the uncharted funding there.
On a motion, I have a second, any further discussion? Are you not all in favor of approving two thousand, not up to two thousand five hundred for my unrestricted funds for paving, please say a.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Me as well, more to care.
You just spent seventeen thousand.
We did.
It goes to us. Good stuff. Had a long conversation in the Calcoop informational meeting last night about. Why are you saving up money? You know, in unrestricted reserve, what are you gonna do? They're sending out a good chunk of money, but they're also looking at uh, two million dollars worth of. Building projects over the next three years, so.
We don't necessarily, being seventeen thousand. Is it a ton, but it's also a lot that we don't build into our local budget, so.
That's right.
Yes.
And that's what, you know, took some explaining last night to get it to understand.
Moving on. Um, next we have a seventy fund request. You wanna know about this one? Do you know how this one works? This is a fund completely different than you for field maintenance.
Oh, no, I'll learn about that, yeah. I sort of heard a little bit about.
Give me a second so that you get an idea. We'll talk through it, um, so just so you know. Um. There was somebody who donated a bunch of money to the town and but also to the school district. To maintain their fields and properties um, better off the interest, and so. A trustee of that fund works with our athletic director to determine what kind of money needs to be spent to maintain the fields, and in this case, they're adding in um. A storage shed. In this, in this request, and so that money comes from a fund that is not the budget. And not unrestricted funds, and so then maybe that works separately from you, but it happens, maybe involved in this, let me just, you know, some things where. It requires some of your people and time. Occasionally, and Randy will let you know. And um, which you always wanna be aware of what's happening.
Right.
And in this case, they're asking for. Twenty-five thousand four hundred and seventeen for a concrete, concrete walls and a floor for a shed. Field maintenance itself, and that's just again, something that you're now not having to do.
We get complimented all the time on our fields.
And then they're getting some in-kind work from the town, um, some, some discounted, heavily discounted excavator work from the town, because the machines are already out there.
Yeah.
Peeks and plus supporter of um, the school.
And it's like. Shed in the store that we need the storage for, the baseball shop or?
All of it, just, I, I think it's, I think it's all of their equipment.
Right now, it's behind. The baseball dugout.
Yeah, so it's.
They're going to build.
The only reason I ask is. Um, if we don't have a baseball team, softball team.
We're still.
So it's like sports stuff needs.
Yeah, because that's.
We have cross-country stuff that needs to be put away down there, obviously, to put all this stuff, because you, you're running yourself down there, I mean. And we don't, we don't not have a baseball team, we just don't have a baseball team this.
Right. I'm just curious, is it supposed in the shed more than? Like, put in or if it's. Like stuff for the fields or? What are we gonna be used for, or what is it used for? I just don't know, it wasn't like a.
I'll make some, I'll make some assumptions, I don't know the, like, for sure, but we've got really nice um, scoreboards that are out there. Um, we've got.
In the winter, probably.
Probably some of that, some of the.
The gym machines.
Yeah.
Kitchen machines, all of that, you have the chalk line machine. Um, and right now they're holding that back and forth.
Oh, they are.
Tractor or the. Neater. Yeah. I mean, they saw some of it down, but even though they cleaned it out up here and stuff like that, like, we'll be spraying up the chalk machine in the shops.
And the chocolate.
So.
So just a sports equipment.
Yeah.
Like the.
So you have one chalk machine? It's a random question, he sent me a text. He sent me a text a few minutes ago, said they were in the sixth inning and he was never gonna make.
I mean, I'm happy to like.
They might only have one choker because he would, he had brought it to Twinfield to, for us to use over there for softball. And then he got, Twinfield got one.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I know Twinfield was just ordering one.
Yeah, I put it together last week. Softball field. No, we're doing.
So this money would come from the seventy fund, like trust. From the seventy trust fund. And it's for field maintenance, it's for the construction of a shed, and for some labor and for some concrete here for the shed, you can do a construction into it.
And this, that twelve thousand includes the field up here and the town?
It, yeah.
Did the term both, both of them?
Does both of us, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, it might only be down there right now, but they maintain.
I was a little bit.
It's good. The little one, will leave the area.
They, and I know Diamond Ture, I don't know. Um, it was the fault that they were gonna do some stuff. Out there. They really love the guy.
Yeah.
They have.
He's really good too.
So.
Great. All right, how you doing about the twenty-five four seventeen from the seventy fund? As recommended by the trustee and by our.
I'll make a motion.
Motion, yeah, twenty-five seven, twenty-five four seventeen. From the seventy fund. For field maintenance and the construction of the storage shed on the town.
As recommended by.
As recommended by. Yeah, I thought you were right. That's what I said. All right, a motion on the floor.
Uh, second.
Second is from, a motion in a second to approve. Twenty-five four seventeen from the seventy fund. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And myself, that's three. Motion carries.
Great, thank you, Marion seven.
Yeah.
That's a select word, they call it Marion's one, that's, that's what they're called Marion's. We call it.
Actually Marion and Paul.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but I mean. We, we do, though, we get complimented all the time on how incredible our.
It's, you wouldn't see, we wouldn't have the money to spend your, through year to, to have nice deals. It would, it would get cut every year, so I'm glad to have it.
Yeah.
All right, the last thing on. Oh, it's around here, yeah, so the, the fee for inter-district sports. The fee structure. Inter-district sports, and Randy's not here. This, we talked about this in April. And um, we've talked about taking it up the CCSU board. Because it's gonna have to come down from the CCSU board. Um, to get to the CCSU board, and I'm not sure it has to go from the CCSU board, I'm not sure we don't split this in place in Danville. So, because I um. And you guys had a chance to read through this fee structure, this fee structure. This is um, it matches the fee structure and some other places that we know about, it matches um, some things we do, it would not include. According to this, this draft proposal here, it would not have to include high school, it would include basically three through eight. And it helps us to lay the costs of when people send their kids over to play sports for us. And they help us pay for the referees and help us pay for the other things.
It would impact. Other, other um. Like teaching them.
It would impact them, but do they get it saved?
Well, yeah.
Right, so.
Now, you can put that in place, you're, you're running the athletic. So I can publish it, it's not a, it's not a ridiculous amount of money.
I guess, I think it's. That's fair statement. When we took it up to the CCSU board, um, the twenty-four chair thought that it didn't need to happen because it was going to be all high school kids and they have their own. They weren't using, they had a similar system at club. System for their kids of this age, and he thought that because of all the in-kind sharing. He didn't think that this was, this was just moving money around for the sake of moving money around. But not, his not being aware of the perception issue in Danville.
Right.
And so, um, this is not one for action here tonight, in, on this board, because we're just gonna discuss it. But the way, I think the way it works is, this is in Danville, it's gonna be saying to people who participate. You gotta pay us seventy-five dollars a kid. It's, it gets, it gets twisted really quickly and it's easy to say that you wouldn't have them, but. They wouldn't have anything if they.
And, and we're willing to pay that amount. To send our kid to, let's say, Twinfield.
Right.
You know.
That was.
If Twinfield doesn't want seventy-five dollars a kid, you don't have to take it, but. Well, send, send an, whoever that works and. You have a fee structure coming in, you're gonna have to honor it, go on now.
But any recs for, I mean, a hundred dollars.
I'm sure there's. Even the little fee is expensive.
So there's a bargain, and people can teach to.
Yeah.
Be forced or not enforced at their other schools.
Yeah.
I think we're gonna make this.
And it's still going back to the school, we're setting this.
This is not, we're not charging parents to have. We're not charging.
It's gonna pay the fee.
I'll do that.
Um, right, coming out of, it'll be an exchange. With the district, like, it'll be a billing, there's a billing.
Yeah, I would, I don't know how much they'll do it. It's an accounting.
Yeah.
For answer to something.
Probably easy within CCSU, but if it was a kid that was somehow not in our, like, Saint J students participated on our. Basketball last year.
They're gonna have to run a check.
Right.
You're right, yeah, then sit the run check, and then you just, you don't, you don't offer, and you pay it. And um, so I, I guess. We hold this as Danville, if they don't wanna participate, they don't, they wanna participate, but.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, if you didn't want to track.
No, I think it's okay, because I think we needed to talk about whether or not we need to pay back the CCSU. And since it doesn't involve others, it only involves us billing and then. Putting it on the records here locally, that we are going to act for this money.
Right.
Then it's really not, it's really.
It's still a really low impact too, because there are other kids that are not. A lot of kids are not impacted by, we talked about certain high school sports.
Right. Would it maybe to start it and solve them?
Probably, right, spring's already.
Yeah.
Oh, hopefully be reimbursed. Now.
No. Yeah.
They have a budget.
The season's already started.
Well, so he's not here, he's not here, we're not one for action. So let us put this on the agenda for the next time as a Danville um, specific item. With action to consider enacting this uh, fee structure, which is a procedure, not a policy. It is fee structure procedure and um. Yeah. And that's good, it doesn't, it doesn't apply to K through two, the little kids can still come out, while they're still deciding whether or not they like sports. They can still participate in our youth programs for annual charge. So we're not dislading people from participating. We just need to help allay the costs of referees and field maintenance.
Yeah, Natalie, Natalie just said, but Randy put in there, like, this would be a twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Um. He's off, he's off the year.
He is off, twenty-five for the set.
But.
It's always hard with the.
Yeah.
It is.
But.
Not for September, because it's like places already have their.
Budget, but because it's such a nominal amount, could it? Could it go, could it, I think that's my question to consider and talk about even for next time.
Yeah.
How many, how many kids do we have coming in?
It, so it says in the miscellaneous, he expects the total amount to be brought in at about three thousand dollars.
Per year.
Per year.
Different school.
So from multiple different schools.
So from multiple different schools.
So it's not gonna make a break.
It's not gonna break anybody else.
I would like to see it start to follow my.
I think, I think.
You wanna run that by the CCSU people or if it's out FYI or?
No, you just like, you talk, it's just. When it's all sorted out, I'll run their most of the teaching board, Calco board and say. Been implemented to cover the cost of Danville for caring for a long time. Your kids, white sports and Danville. School sports means.
If they want to.
If they want to, and so nominal fee and the boards, the board has to pay it and it's not gonna break anything.
And Lauter already does.
Arford already does it, right, so CCSB already know.
Yeah.
There's a.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did say they.
And but then the, the, the next step for this award and for this community is, yes, we do, when they say, well, do those kids pay? Yes, we have a system and we have, we have something in place that we'll lay these costs even to a small degree.
Right.
And it's, that's just the perception.
Like if they're small in the team, they're. There's more and, you know.
Hopefully, hopefully we can, we can save somebody a little bit of green for long with this. Right, and that's that. And I'm to the end of my items for today. You guys ready for public input? Is there any public input?
No public.
No public, okay. I have two meetings to talk about with you guys, so first future agenda items for this board, at the next regular board meeting, we're gonna talk about the fee structure. We're gonna have presentations from a couple of Capstone kids. And um we'll have a lot of the regular stuff. And then when you have someone to stop in the facilities, something else comes up, you'll, if you think it's pressing, please let us know. Um, either in writing or whatever, thanks for coming to the meeting, but. Want to make an income, you don't have to.
Yeah.
But I do, I do still.
I never, I never once took a look at it, it's nice.
I appreciate. Same, I appreciate you coming.
So it's our fee structure for next meeting.
Um, some student projects.
Oh, right.
Project is a presentation and.
If something else.
The building committee, no.
We're gonna talk about the building committee meeting in just a second, I don't know um if you guys are ready to go on, so. So that's all I have that, that I know about for this upcoming meeting for right now, and then the second meeting that we have a scheduled meeting for the building committee on next Thursday. But I don't know if we're gonna be ready for the building committee yet.
Yeah.
We had a, so just FYI, we had a, we had a preliminary meeting with a small. With TruX looking at some proposals and we can, we can present some pared down information to that group if you'd like to. Or if you want a way to hold that until the regular board meeting instead. And put that as part of the regular board meeting and not meet next Thursday.
Maybe we wait, we let all package that.
Cause we don't have, we don't, we don't have a ton of information yet, so what I'd like to do in that case, if you guys agree. Is instead of looking at the uh sixteen for a building committee meeting. May sixteenth, let's postpone the May sixteen building committee meeting. To, to the prior month and we have one scheduled.
We have another one in June.
We have one, we have one scheduled for June sixteenth.
Or thirteen.
Thirteen, we have June thirteen.
Yeah.
So we have, so we're gonna take, I'm gonna go May sixteenth. May sixteenth canceled, and I'll send an email to the. People and I'll say that we're not gonna have this one, cause the other information, things are moving a little bit.
Yeah, a lot of know, things are progressing.
We'll go on the thirteenth, we may have an update, uh, it may, if it becomes prudent for TruX to. Make a presentation on our regular meeting on June the fourth, if that's the time works better for them, then we'll invite the building committee to that.
Okay.
And we'll set the floor. That's. And that's that, okay, so that's those two.
Should we give those things to TruX, he's not, not gonna hold it for us, but FYI, we may need you on.
I, yeah, I, I emailed them back the other day, a couple of the dates, and then he didn't know where we were gonna go, so I was waiting to talk to you guys tonight. And I'll follow up with Cam to figure out. If we, if he has information, if he wants to talk about the, the larger, simple group of the building committee. You can do that, or the large, or the assembled, fully assembled board.
I have a question, because I don't remember, did we decide we're meeting in July so that we can meet with. Mike and Matt, which I was coming for.
So we have to meet in July. Now.
Because of what we decided about.
About some.
That's just what I just need to have that in mind.
The July meeting would be. So our June meeting is our next meeting and the subsequent meeting after that is gonna be July the second. And we have to have it, so the July meeting can be canceled. You don't have to come. July second. You don't have to come.
Why, why are you meeting?
Uh, because at the, on, at the occasion of your retirement, the superintendent no longer has to um. Has, no longer has higher authority.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, we had that.
One way or the other, in case it's a higher. I need to be able to prove that higher, I can cancel it, there, there may be a point where I can cancel it, if nothing.
I got it, I forgot.